And welcome to the business meeting. We're here for a change, so I'd like to sort of clean this order please. And we have our local, we have Mr. Lu, with the bell, with she's coming, with the phone, and so, and then I come to the table, with the bell, and with the carry, and then with the pad, and then I have another big deal, which is that you're a sponsor.
The United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
I will just ask for Mr. Lu and his privilege, if I would be of interest, when you've been born, and if you know. Uh huh. Thank you very much. We have a number of things that, um, that happened in this past week, we've had a press release that went out yesterday, and we have a finalist for, um, superintendent position, his name is Dr. Tyler, and we are very pleased, and you will have an opportunity to meet your friends next week. A lot of the information has gone out, and there's also been a press release. In addition to that, we also do want to have, um, very heartfelt, sincere thank yous to the financial, the funding, uh, the Fairfield Woods Middle School Project. It really, it was quite great, it was very important. And Mr. Lu also wants to speak to that for a moment. Um, before I forget this real quick, I just wanted to, um, mention that Diar, who is indispensable to us, um, just had a birthday, we all want to know, he's still 29.
Again, as the, as the Fairfield Building Committee is, um, I just wanted to thank the Fairfield Building Committee, who are not just a group of gelatinous flaw, a bunch of initials, but you are Chairman Bill, um, Karim Ademali, Victor D. Marina, Neil Fink, Richard Junior, Tim Marshall, Dan, and I, as Stuart, we get it again, and their hard work really is very appreciated. I also want to thank, um, Dr. Clark, and all of Central Office, all of their hard work, they're amazing, as well as our Fairfield Woods Principal, Patsis. And I'd also like to thank, uh, the Board of Finances and the RTA for their support in getting this project to this point, um, as well as the PTA and the parents who spent a lot of time writing letters and sending emails. I'd like to ask you to send some more of those letters and emails to thank the Board of Finance, the RTA, and the Building Committee for their hard work and their support.
Thank you, Aaron. We are very fortunate this evening. Um, the first piece we have on the agenda is recognition of Nancy Malcatakakis. She is the 2010 National Family and Consumer Science Teacher of the Year. Um, it's my understanding that this evening, we are going to have something very special. Um, we've been calling it actually Project Runway, and we will have, I understand, students that are going to be modeling some of your work. Um, did you want to see? Please, look ahead.
I can't begin to tell you how I feel. Um, I was very nervous, and still am nervous right now, walking in, but, um, just the way you all stood for this, I, between that, between being told that, um, I was chosen for the National Teacher of Family and Consumer Sciences, I, it's just, I am to believe as believe. Um, last fall, I, I was asked to write something about a program that I had started four years ago, and that was turning trash into fashion, and it ended up at birthday. And that was because when the Earth Day Committee people came to me, along with Mark Maron, and said, "Could you participate in Earth Day?", and I said, "Like what, turn trash into fashion? That's what you want to do." And from there, it just grew every single year. We had a trashy fashion show, um, we worked with the Mill Hill students, and they come over and they work with us, um, we show them how to walk the runway, um, we have the milk plane, um, band playing for us when we do this, and it's fascinating, and it's also online, you can get there, um, and actually see this fashion show. So over the four years, it, it grew. This year, we're actually having a recycling boutique, and all the money that we earn from the recycling boutique will go to Children's Miracle Network. But right now, I would like to do a little trashy fashion show with you. We don't have the music, if you want to hum along, that's fine, um, but as the girls come in, I'll just give you a little brief briefing on them. So first coming out is, this is Alyssa Alnoffi. She wants you to remember to recycle as often as possible. Thank you, Alyssa. Next is Shama Bannan. This amazing pattern you take can do. This is truly an amazing all-weather skirt. Thank you, Shama. Okay, next. Sophia Rodanen is ready for evening. Stunning paper dress with a black trash belt to assemble it. Here comes Diana. Diana won. Diana won the silver medal for outstanding dress at our recent FCC LA Spring Conference. Her overall construction is amazing, and you must see this dress. Diana, just turn again. Danielle models the paper wrap. Truly amazing. Thank you, Danielle. And that is our trashy fashion, that, and we'll try to look at it. I would like to invite all of you to make a, our, um, birthday, where we actually have a full trash and fashion show. So, thank you very much, all of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to point out something that's very obvious, and we just recognized a teacher who won National Teacher of the Year, and it was two days ago, plus five of her students. It is obvious to everyone why she is so successful.
Thank you. I'm actually having the privilege of my children can add her to URM's wonderful team. I will, my takeaway from, um, the students' clothing just ever so slightly, because after watching the young ladies come up, I think they can make anything look good. Our best to you, thank you, we're very proud of you. Um, next thing that we have on the agenda is an approval of minutes, may have a motion to be done, seconded by, with the doubt, new discussion for board members. I can't remember if we just was, I believe, a title or whatever it was. On the very last page. Of course, now I can't do one like this.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, with this one. Newness, newness, correction, and board members ready to vote? Ready to vote, folks? Great. Paul Davis, passes unanimously, thank you very much. And we have new history, discussion of nature's classroom, Dr. Clark?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Mr. Mathno, Mr. Hatzis, Mrs. Dawson, and Mrs. Kavanaugh, who are also here to make, in case you have any questions. The middle school principals did send a memo to you, uh, January 5th, outlining, or actually March 5th, say, the fact that, due to some weather, that's longer than the curriculum, the cost, the fact that some families were not able to afford it anymore, that you made the decision that you would like to offer other in-school programs next year for sixth graders, instead of nature's classroom. And these board members wanted to discuss it, the principals are here, if you would like them to come to the table and talk about it from their school perspective, or, essentially.
Do any members have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you for the memo, and, um, I completely support your decision to do this, so, thank you for putting this together and all the reasoning behind it. I don't have an issue with not continuing it on, even though the venue that it was.
Mrs. Allen, and Mr. McHull?
I just want to echo the sentiments, um, you know, I have two kids that went through it, and it was wonderful, I know there were physical problems back then, and, you know, the one, my youngest one, like, four years ago, there were problems, um, again, so, um, you know, thank you for the moment you made this work, and, you know, whatever you, um, suggest, it's a little bit, thank you.
Ms. McHull?
Yeah, I just, the only question, the only question I have is, can someone, when did you come to the conclusion that it's not tied to the sixth grade curriculum? I mean, that's one of the reasons why you decided to disget to me. Can I, are you careful on the middle school principals?
Mr. Mathno, or Mr. Hatzis, Mrs. Dawson, please.
Thank you. Thank you for providing this, and thank you for supporting this decision. Um, we recognized a while back that it was not tied to the curriculum, and we decided to keep the trip because it was a tradition in Fairfield for a long period of time, and from a middle school's perspective, there was other social benefits that were arrived outside of curriculum, that we felt, uh, the trip was important enough to, um, continue. The problem that we're starting to see besides recognizing curriculum as we're going down the road of, of, um, being sensitive instructional time, was the fact that, uh, we had some economic times over the last two or three years, that have severely hampered this trip. At Roger L. Lobe School loan, uh, over the last few years, um, we've had to locate over $10,000, uh, last year, and over $15,000 this year, to support our population, uh, so that every child, you know, one of our philosophies at Roger L. Lobe School, on the open days, it was never going to be a trip that a child couldn't participate on due to financial purposes. When you start hitting $15,000, you know, there's a point in time in payment schedules, and, and we also lost, um, our program to stop and shop for, uh, financial reasons and IRS purposes, that caused us to be in a very difficult position, so, um, although the teachers, I think, were supportive, they felt that, um, based on the experience that happens in sixth grade, there's things that we can do in each of our schools that, you know, accomplish some of the objectives that this program was doing at, uh, far less expensive than families. There was also the concern that, for whatever reason, students stayed back at our middle schools, um, there was an inequity involved when 250 students come back with an experience, and although we did have a, a week that was similar to, from an equity standpoint, as, as close to parallel to what they did at Nature's Classroom, it still was dividing our schools. So we felt that, uh, you know, some of the objectives that we could accomplish, and we're in those planning stages right now, in terms of offering team-building activities, and, and, um, opportunities to go to a sleeping giant and turn him to nature's disciplining unit, and still get some benefits of, um, relationship building opportunities, could be impacted at far less cost to our families.
I would say that there was always a very loose connection to the curriculum to begin with, it was something that we made work, and that, uh, Nature's Classroom was always open to speaking with us about, in organizing different activities that weren't necessarily the ones that they would do. An example would be that one of the favorite activities was an experience with the Underground Railroad, where our sixth graders were studying ancient Egypt at that time, so, some of those ties were very much of a reach, uh, but we felt that there were other, and we would talk to them about certain science experiments, and they would work with us, but again, it was always very, very loosely connected, but we felt there were many, um, good reasons to go ahead anyway, so the curricular connection was never really our number-one priority for Nature's Classroom.
Also, prior to Nature's Classroom, which is probably going back, say, 17 years, at least in the Fairfield Woods, uh, case, um, there was a trip to Canada, and, um, you know, there became so many logistical issues with that, um, you know, traveling over a border, and, and all the other things, and just the travel time alone, Nature's Classroom was, was landed on, really as an alternative to that, um, and, as I'm sure you know, this, uh, and it, and it grew, um, in leaps and bounds, and, and obviously, the kids had a wonderful time, but as, uh, so I'm sure you realize, with a number of increasing demands, especially in the last, uh, five to 10 years, um, you know, we have really, in, in our district, raised the stakes for, um, you know, the achievement levels of our students, and so every, every day away from the curriculum, as we've designed it to help the students reach, reach those high levels, um, has, has, has become a little bit of a hardship, and it's not just the days that we're attending the, um, the actual experience, but an incredible amount of planning for, you know, overnight trip, an overnight trip, where you have roommate situations, and, you know, the funding, and all of those things, it really just became incredible, um, uh, distraction, if you will, in some ways, um, even though, as sure you know, we did not come to this decision lightly, this was a very, very hard and labor decision, and it, it took us a long time to, um, to really weigh the balance of the costs and the benefits, and, um, and to remain.
And I'm going to try and do it wherever I saw it, and Mrs. Allen, and Mrs. Altman, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
So have you had any, um, positive or negative feedback from parents since this, I think this memo went out, in our, uh, my, my son's going in his sixth grade next year, and at least at Jennings, they sent this memo out to the parents, what do you call that, the, uh, something?
I can't, it's related.
That's right, okay. I should know that, but, um, and, and since, since that's happened, have you had any feedback?
I could speak to it, uh, from some experience, what we're trying to do is, is not wait to the last minute, we're trying to be upfront and, and let the parents, even on this decision, as early as possible, as they're transitioning to the middle school, um, you know, our articulation letters is included, and as we move to our elementary visits, and recently, Riverfield School, um, at their, um, the PK invites us down to talk a little bit about the middle school, and Mr. Swayadowitz, who covers, uh, Riverfield School, they had that on the agenda, the parents, um, although they were disappointed, rightly so, because especially if you have children that want this trip, and you, your children are looking forward to it, it is a disappointment, but, uh, they understood the reasoning behind it, and it seems that they're supportive of it. I think the important thing for us is, and, and the real trick is going to be in what we're replacing, and I really think that it's going to be a home run, from my standpoint, from my college standpoint, in terms of providing the benefits at far less dollars for our families at this second of the time.
And also, I just wanted you to please relate to the teachers who made this work over the years, um, our gratitude to them, and especially to Dr. McGrath, if you could have done, I know how special it was to him, so thank you.
Um, my last parental experience with this trip was eight years ago, four years prior to that. Thank you for making the decision you've made, uh, because eight years ago, I was asking the very questions that you have just articulated, um, and I would ask that, while, while it was an exciting trip for students, it was very loosely tied to the curriculum, and, um, everything you have said, each of you, is, couldn't be more on point. The, um, extreme demands that are on our students, the times that they are in class are very valuable, and, and to that point, I would hope that if this trip has been evaluated, that other trips, either the trip that would replace this, the activity, whatever would replace this, and whatever other activities that we have that take students away from the school, be evaluated for their value, their, uh, relationship to the curriculum, the time that they're away, and the cost, because not directed at, um, you know, three principals from the middle school, but we have a number of trips in this district that are very expensive, and it does not allow all students to participate, so, I would just ask other administrators and district-wide, that we would take this first step and start looking at all the trips that we have for their value. Thank you.
I just want to just address that, I mean, the, all the very valuable points and the dollar points, and, uh, just so you know, and like most people, we just go through these shares, we do often, we are looking at every trip very closely, and in addition, we're including our colleagues from our department chairs, to make sure that any trips that we do go out on, um, are aligned with the curriculum and within, whether they're, should continue, and they're effective, or whether there needs to be some refining in our agendas, or whether they need to be looked at to be reworked, so, that process is in place right now.
Mr. Maron?
Yeah, um, just briefly, I guess, some of my thoughts on this is that, um, a few things I like about some of these programs are the sort of assured experience, or common experience, that all the students would experience throughout the district, so it sort of lines the three middle schools together, in a sense that they all, the middle school students go through the program, uh, all through, the whole, even other different schools, they have a common experience, um, at least in one particular program, uh, so, whatever is newly devised, would be my vote, that it could be done, with an assured experience whereby nearly all the students are given the opportunity to participate in it, and is a common experience for all middle school students.
If I could address that, and, and just, we, and that, another excellent point, um, one thing that I think that makes our three middle schools in Fairfield very strong is, we have a very close relationship, we work very closely together, we lock, walk lockstep in many issues, and we have agreed that if something is good for Roger L. Lobe School students, it needs to be shared with the other student schools, it's always good for them as well, and vice versa, all the way across the board. We don't walk lockstep fault in every aspect of it, we want it, and that kind of makes us unique in our own way, but, I'm going to say 95, 90% of the time, we're walking lockstep, so that there's a common middle school experience. You know, I'm sorry, I also just addressed that, um, we're, we're very lucky in that we have an incredible pool of talented teachers, and oftentimes, these trips emanate from the creativity and the hard work of, you know, a core group of those teachers who then share it with their colleagues, even within the school, but the team structure that we have, sometimes there are experiences even across teams that aren't necessarily identical, but they all are emanating from the exact same principles, the exact same, um, ideas, you know, as, as the memo points out, the things that we really have loved about Nature's Classroom is that incredible, um, you know, bonding experience that it creates for the students, and the opportunities for social interactions, that they don't get necessarily on a school campus. So, um, we, we will be in constant communication as we start to develop these, these programs, but, you know, you may see some, some differences, uh, across the middle schools, but at the same time, they will all come from the same principles that will guide us in terms of making sure that what's assured across the district, um, achieves the same purpose for all the kids.
And then, Mr. Maron?
Just, I'm hinting at common, not that there's identical middle school experiences in everything, only that there's at least one program or activity that is shared among all the middle schools, that sort of the shared experience, at least anyone that goes through the middle school, while they have varying experiences in the middle school, there's differences in middle school, where their parents have to be, but at least there is some common thread, at least in one program, with all the middle school students would experience, so that they run to somewhere in the future, they can at least talk about one experience that's all in common, I think it's important, finding aspects during the middle school, and later on.
Great point, thank you.
Mr. Kenny?
So, my, my one question on this is, maybe taking this out, you mentioned the benefits to that, um, how do you perceive those benefits coming to fruition? Will we have more instructional time in core curriculum? Are we going to replace this program with a similar but less expensive, expensive program? How are we going to benefit on the new program?
If you could talk briefly about some initial steps that we're taking, I think we're, we're going to find a balance, and we're going to benefit by keep capturing some instructional time, but knowing the benefit when you have a team concept in middle school, and how important it is that there's a bonding experience, you know, we're not going to, um, allow that to go by the wayside, so, there are going to be activities that are developed to try to capture as much as we can, in terms of building those teams and those groups and communities, in a manner that it benefits their experience as sixth graders, and, uh, they, they will have trips, or they will have an experience that's going to be far less, I'm, I'm going to guess, you know, what we were originally talking about is in around the $100 range for, um, a few experiences, and whether they're going to be all front-loaded, or they're going to be spread throughout the area at, um, strategic times, we're not sure yet, we're still in those initial phases, because, again, I think we have to thank our, our teachers for what they've done, they're having a tough time in some respects in letting this go, because as much as they know it's the right thing, you know, the school's been doing this, and which school you're at, up to 27 years, that this has been part of our curriculum, mostly, um, history behind us, for those of you that don't know, when Fairfield had eighth or sixth in the elementary school, this was part of the elementary school, when sixth grade moved up, we kind of inherited it, and it was good, but as times move on, we reflect on your practices, and for some time, we've been looking at this, and, and getting, you know, as, um, we've heard comments from parents and, and board members, it's something we've been reviewing for a while, it's become easy, but we're looking to do this right, so we can capture as much of the positive in this trip as possible, within our campus, or within our community, at nature's, and, and that, you know, we also are in a situation this year, where we dodge a bullet, and I can speak from my school, that we're in that, um, H1N1 situation, we had like $101,000 out there that is non-refundable, and we're waiting for Fairfield to possibly pull the plug on us, and say, you know, no, we're not going to go at this point, and then we're in a situation where we're going to find $101,000, so, it's those types of, of pressures that we deal with, besides the amount of time that's lost from teacher's energies, trying to put something together that has multiple layers of facets, that now I believe, you know, we can have a better focus on, and, and do a better job, you know, and I found an only time will tell, you know, we may be back to the table in three or four years and say, you know, here's something that we think we want to do, and ask for your permission to move in a different direction, so, at this point, we think we're going to break this.
I'd just like to add that, um, as we are just beginning in the planning stages of our replacement activities, we're looking at lots of, uh, possibilities just in the town of Fairfield, we just look around at, at the beach, and, and day hikes, and all kinds of things that we can do within a really close proximity, so that we can just take the essence of the trip, and, and move away from the problems of the expense and the time, and in particular, the curricular planning time for teachers, if we can move away from those problems, end up with, end up with just the essence of what Nature's Classroom provided for us, we believe we can really do that within our local area, so we're eager to talk more about those possibilities.
Just going to close with what I opened with, which is, you have even more further substantiated why this needs to come to close, and I just want to thank you for taking the time to come here tonight and further explain, um, the decision that you made, and again, I 100%, 100% support your decision, and I think it served its purpose, but it's ran its course, and I look forward to you finding things within Fairfield for the kids to do, because there certainly is a lot that they can learn from here. I have actually just two things, obviously, you will be looking at something else where you
Obviously, you will be looking at something else when you have made a decision. I'm sure you had already planned to do so, but would you be kind enough just to do a brief write-up so we can appreciate where the kids will be going and understand the connection? And the other thing I'd like to say is thank you for very well thought out and I'm here for the decisions. Thanks for coming tonight to speak to us.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued support.
My next thing is on agenda is the date of Fairfield Lavo High School and Fairfield Ward High School graduation. We have a recommended motion that the Board of Education established Thursday, June 24th, 2010, at 6:00 p.m., is the date of graduation for Fairfield Lavo High School and Fairfield Ward High School, class of 2010. May I have a motion today? The floor has been moved to Ms. Juma. Any discussion from board members?
Mr. Darnold?
Would it be common to have a rain date or does this is random?
May I have a shot?
Yeah, we did a lot of great thinking.
Is there any comment from the public? Thank you again, the allies board members, if there are any to vote. All in favor? I have to see the end of this one, thank you very much. Were they excited for public comments and petitions? During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any individual present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes. An audiovisual permit cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personal matters or comments addressed to specific members of the board. Citizens are asked to comment on any faulty item at the time the items under consideration by the board.
Good evening. I will ask that you actually address the board, please. Thank you, Susan. Good evening. I am Jenny Gillis, parent of James Locke, a fourth grader at Riverfield Elementary School. I live at 230 Nichols Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the parents notwithstanding, as well as those parents who have signed this statement but could not be here tonight. We are all parents of current fourth graders at Riverfield. There are currently 99 children in this fourth grade, and this year, like last year, the children are in only four sections. This class is one of the largest classes to go through Riverfield. Because we believe that this large class size has played a detrimental role in their education, we are here to plead with you tonight to add a fifth section for this class next year. As I know board members are aware, this CMT performance last year by this class was alarming. Thirty-one percent of the children did not reach the goal level for reading, and 39% did not meet the goal for mathematics. This poor CMT performance was not a surprise to the parents here tonight. We knew that our children were not learning the curriculum in a satisfactory manner. Our principal and other administrators have kindly met with us in response to this crisis, and more children this year are receiving some additional academic assistance, and reportedly, recent DRPs are consistent with district averages. Yet we remain concerned that this group of children continues not to have the opportunity to reach their potential, let alone learn the set curriculum. Tonight, we are urging you to make the significant step of adding an additional section to their fifth grade, even if the grade size does not follow your guidelines. Our children will suffer unfairly during the remainder of their academic careers if they aren't each given more instructional attention. The principal and teachers are doing what they can within the current budget, but exceptional circumstances, including the poor CMT scores, require an exceptional response. While we understand your class size guidelines and budgets, we believe our school system is failing these children. Too many students in this grade aren't at an academic level that is evident in our other schools. Meanwhile, the more academically successful children in this grade are being ignored as overworked teachers do their best to bring up large numbers of children who have fallen behind.
Just a few.
Many parents of fourth graders at Riverfield believe that our system is failing in its basic mission of enabling our children to reach their academic potential. You are the leaders of this school system. We want you to add a fifth section before our children fall further behind. We need you to devote whatever resources are necessary to catch our children up. We need you to lead an effort at addressing what we see as a crisis in our children's education. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we had another person that was provoked here.
If you didn't call it, I was like, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other individuals who would like to address the boards? I see a hand up. Mr. Dunn?
Good evening, J. Alfred Dunn. I would be the first to admit that I am aging. However, on that situation called Nature's Classroom or open-air activity, whatever, I think I heard one of the principals of the school talk about Underground Railroad and Egyptian culture, whatnot. I do not know too much about history. So therefore, I am curious as to how that link-up was glued in place. I also would like to know what it consisted of and how it impacted upon the children. Because you have two subjects, at least 10,000 to 15,000 to 20,000 years, we move one from the other. They are confused already about history. Don't add to it. But I would still like to know what the link-up was and how it came about. Thank you.
Dr. Clark, for reports and recommendations to the board members.
Thank you. I would like to point out to board members, although it's difficult for you to see them, March is Youth Art Month, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Barbara Pollard who put this display together, and I hope that you will have a chance to take a look at this. It's amazing to me, this was done by students.
Wonderful.
Thank you. As promised, Dr. Mizato is going to bring you the updates to date of our five-year strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. As you know, this is the second year of a five-year strategic plan. We have six action committees that have been working. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the work of each of those committees, and just so you're aware, most of the committees have been meeting monthly since the inception of the strategic plan. The Facilities Committee, their main goal has been to look at energy conservation, and to that end, they've been working closely with students and other key people outside the district to look at solar photovoltaic system, which they're looking to look at at Fairfield Ward High School. And I believe they're going to be coming forward later this spring with a Board of Education to take a look at. The Diversity Group has been working mainly on professional development. They've been working with PD Council, which consists of representatives from each of the schools, to develop and work with teachers around addressing diversity issues within the classroom and within the curriculum. So that's what they've been working really hard on. The Community Group is actually broken up into three sections, Elementary, Middle, and High School. The Elementary Subcommittee has been focusing on training our teachers across the board in a responsive classroom methodology. And also, we have four summer academies planned for the summer, which will train another one of the teacher groups, and it's very close to having most, if not all, of our elementary teachers trained. It's worth a responsive classroom training, which is terrific. The Middle Schools have landed on Habits of Mind, which is a program that focuses on different character traits. They've been looking at the traits of kindness, respect, and compassion, and have been working at developing a survey. In April of this year, April next month, they're looking to put out a survey to parents, staff, and students for feedback related to the Habits of Mind initiative. And the High School Group has been working on a number of issues, and you may be aware that there was just last week, a convention for underage drinking at Lavo High School, and this coming Thursday, there will be one at Ward High School. They are looking to collect data as well around developing other programs based on parent feedback and student data in terms of what is needed to ensure that the communities at both high schools are kind, respectful places. The Technology Committee, again, they've been working in two key areas. One is professional development. They've been working with the PD Council on developing workshops for teachers in a variety of areas. And the other key area has been on website design. They want, they have been working with an outside consultant to help us develop a web presence that will be a collaborative site for teachers and parents to be able to go to, related to curriculum development and finding other resources that would be helpful in the teaching process. The Communication Group, their main focus has been on developing a survey that will go out to community members throughout the district to assess the level of communication that they're receiving from the school district and solicit some feedback in terms of how we can approve upon that. And finally, the Program Committee has been working in a number of areas. I'm sure you're aware that we have taken a look at our Cited and Talented Program. We have a Subcommittee that's looking at that very closely, and we're hoping that in the fall, we can bring forward a proposal that takes a look at our Cited and Talented programming options that could be included in the 11, 12 budget. We also have taken a hard look at our summer school, particularly at the middle school level, so we've put together a pretty significant update for the middle school summer school this year. And another key area has been reporting student progress, and there is an elementary-level Subcommittee that's taking a look at our elementary school report cards up against the standards that have been developed and up against our common assessments that we currently have at that level to make sure that there's sort of a seamless reporting across the, across the board. So we've been very hard at work, and we have parents on most of these committees. We meet monthly, our meetings are all hosted, and they're certainly open, and actually, we do have public members to come and sit in the audience at some of our meetings. So it's been a great process. That's the end. So thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the hard work and members that do serve on these committees. I just want to, you mentioned that a few of these committees are going to do surveys. I just want to reiterate that there are no funds being expended for any of these services. Thank you. Mr. Darnold?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Mizato, I'm new to some of this, so I don't understand all of it, but I guess my general comment or question is, this is a second year of a five-year program. How do we gauge how far we are going? I know what I'm hearing is a lot of, we're moving on this, we're working on that. How are we able to gauge what we're actually accomplishing?
In the strategic plan, there are various action items in each of the six areas, and at the end of each school year, the administrative cabinet will come together, and the leadership of each of these six groups will sort of report out in terms of what accomplishments have been for that year, take a look at the action items within the strategic plan, and take a look to see, oh, have we accomplished this as we have stated it in the plan, or do we need more time? In addition to that, we'll look forward to the following year, so next year will be year three. What does the committee feel within reason that group has been accomplished within the next school year, with established goals for that year?
Then the plan is reprinted so that you will get an update that shows completed December 1, completed June 12, carried into next school year for each of the action items that were addressed this year. It actually reprinted, right?
And in the current camera, our target dates against every single item going out to 2013, and of course, every June, we'll take a look and we'll make changes to that if needed to.
Yes, thank you. So in the pile of stuff that we got when I became a board member, I might have missed it, but did we get a packet from, what, I guess, last year with all where we are at this point?
Absolutely, I can certainly give you another copy.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Is the photovoltaic cell initiative the same that presented to us in the Southeast Committee or is it in the D.C.?
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Darnold?
I'm not sure I heard the answer that I was looking for, in terms of where we are in the strategic plan. You mentioned certain goals and goals that are achieved, which is supposed to achieve as in dates of the goal. Are we on track in the second year of the five-year plan? In general?
In general, yes. And when the plan was put together, of course, it was a few years ago, we put together action items that we felt could have been accomplished within a five-year timeframe. Now we're breaking it up into those chunks, and I would say, yes, in general, we're on track.
Are there any areas you think that are off track?
Not off track, but some of the items that are in the plan are definitely forward and five-year initiatives, and not something that we can do in one year in terms of such as reporting student progress. That would be a key one.
I actually have two questions. One, do we have an estimated date of when the Board of Education website will be ready? The goal is true any week now. We're waiting.
We talked about it.
Good evening. Yes, as Dr. Mizato said, we are working with an outside contractor to look at not just the Board of Ed website, but the entire front site of the district to basically improve our web presence overall, as well as looking at the backend, which we use for teachers and students, I'm sure they'll use it headline. We're looking for a little more functionality in both of those with a little bit more seamless design between those two items. And we'll be providing to the Communications Committee on, I believe, April 28th, if that's correct. April 27th, I'll be providing an update with, hopefully with some initial frameworks for that particular website. And the due date that we're looking for is hopefully early June, June 1st.
Thank you very much. And one other question I had was that there was a grading policy change, I know, at one high school, I was wondering how that was working, because I felt that was part of the common assessments. And is, do you plan to also have that also? Originally, I thought you were going to do that at the Fairfield Ward High School this coming year as well?
Well, the grading, the grading policy in terms of reporting student progress, we're still collecting data on that. This is the first year that that initiative has been launched at Lavo High School, and the joint leadership team has been looking closely at Ward as well to see if that's something that they can turn over there, as all the teachers are working on that.
So it is your plan actually to head to Ward this fall?
I'm not sure if Mr. Coy is here. I'm not sure that we have to come to that decision at this point. I know it's in discussion.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because we have two high schools, and I know we're speaking about parity at, is, I'm at a loss quite honestly, if we don't have the same, I really would have a concern, to be very honest with you. Thank you very much. All right, do we have a NIES report?
Just to let you know that the faculty with Ms. Hambling and all of the administrators are preparing their report to the NIES about the recommendations that were made to them, and Ward, the faculty are beginning to go through, they've received a draft report, they have to react to that, and then they'll also get a final report. So they're working really hard on that. And Mrs. Kptai Leonard is going to do the updates on the plan.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening. The Cultural Diversity Task Force is moving forward with its strategies to really get the word out about the Opt-In McKinley. I'm glad to say that Dr. Bernard Nony and I attended a PT meeting of every elementary school in town throughout the month of March, so parents had an opportunity to ask questions about the details, the functionality, and what Opt-In would look like at McKinley, had an opportunity to visit McKinley, had an open house recently, and we've been receiving many email and phone inquiries. So there are lots of questions coming into the office and going to McKinley about programming and some of the details of Opt-In. Application process is open through the end of March, and we're hoping that we can get back to parents sometime in April, and we'll be giving you an update as well. back to parents sometime in April and we'll be giving you an update as to the status of that. And the Cultural Diversity Task Force itself is moving forward with looking at magnet school options or programming options at McKinley for the future and costing those types of things out and looking at examples in the state of magnet school programs in schools.
Thank you very much. The board members have any questions? We actually do not need to have an executive session this evening, so I'm sure you will be all present disappointed if I would have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Carey.